Politically, just do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the labor teams and justice for all.
Dear heaven and Father, be with us as exceedingly as we do the business for the city and the community and the good and the welfare. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I have to say, this is the approval of the agenda. This is the approved agenda for November thirteenth being today, twenty twenty four Regional Planning Mission meeting.
I move to approve the agenda for November thirteenth, twenty twenty four. All second.
Hold on a second.
Aye.
Very good. This is I M D's assistance comments at this point to allow anybody who wants to to discuss any other difficulty necessary and there are allowed three minutes. These guests must state their first and last name and where they reside. If you're here for a particular item, I will give you an option to sit during that time. So Mr. White, at this point, no consistent comments.
No consistent comments.
Alright, anybody at this time to talk about anything they'd want to, you may. If you're not here for a gen ID, you can talk to them in a gen ID. Very good. Mr. White, take your closest assistance comments.
Close assistance comments.
Very good. This is I M E for events. This is the approved events from October fourteenth, twenty twenty four Regional Planning Mission meeting.
I'll make much of the approved events.
I will say it.
On favor?
Aye.
Very good. This is I M F for zoning appeals. This is F one. This is a conditional use permit, CUP for an outside sales lot for a CUP twenty four dash two. So John Kelson of Recreational Vehicles Incorporated has submitted a request for a conditional use permit for an outdoor sales lot for RVs, fit wheelers, horse carriers, campers, et cetera. And John Kelson will be purchasing the Vermeer Great Plains building on Kellogg, developing terms of eight lots and they would like to use lots for sale, campers and RVs, et cetera. Since the sales lot will be outside and not contained within the building, this requires a conditional use permit under City Subdivision regulations. So the planning commission is reviewing a conditional use permit for outside, outside display and sale of RVs and others on the Vermeer Great Plains lot. The lot is zone C two, general business district, and allows for outdoor vehicle, truck, recreational vehicles, traders and motorcycle salesmen and services. But you have to see section four, one oh five C four for repair garage and paint boost and section four, one oh nine C seven for outside sales lots. So under section four, one oh nine C seven states as a conditional use new and used outdoor sales lots, including sale of RVs, vans, small trucks, recreational vehicles and motorcycles. So standards, the board may grant a conditional use for makes specifically finds a fact based upon particular evidence presented to it at the hearing, which supports conclusions that proposed. Conditional use complies with applicable regulations, including lots size requirements, wall regulations, use limitations and performance standards unless it concurrent application is in process for variance. And this would be as it pertains to the particular project necessary, but staff does believe that law complies with all these provisions. The proposed conditional use will not cause substantial injury to the value of the property in the neighborhood. The current property functions as commercial and staff does not believe that this is a genetic devaluation or deviation from the current use as presented. The location and size of conditional use nature and intensity of operation involved and/or conducted in connection with the location of the site, with respect to streets getting access to it are such that the conditional use will not dominate the immediate neighborhood or as it prevents development, use of neighborhood property in accordance with the applicable zoning district regulations and determining whether the conditional use is so dominant the immediate neighborhood, considerations shall be given into location, nature, size, height, building structures, walls, fences on the site, the nature and extent of landscaping on the site. So considering the current use is Vermeer, staff does not believe that the new tenant will substantially change the functionality of the site. The city is looking into paving the road on Casado in the future to allow additional access to the site, which will not prohibit development from joining sites or anything around it that has already been developed. Off-street parking and loading areas will be provided in accordance with the standards set forth in article five of these regulations. Such areas will be screened from adjoining property uses and located so as to protect such present use to show injurious effects. So off-street parking is provided currently. The property is not screened, I believe, effectively to the east and the planning commission should take this into account and consider its approval. And this will be presented on an aerial map. You'll see where there's not enough, I believe, adequate screening for seasons addition, which is on the east side. Utilities are currently in existence that serve the site. As I mentioned, Vermeer is currently in existence there now. So this will not be a dramatic deviation from its current use. Adequate access roads, entrances, exit drives and access controls available will be provided by plating dedications or guarantees. It shall be so designed that traffic hazards and internal traffic congestion in public streets and roads. So ingress and ingress is currently in existence and does not provide access to a body residential development. So you can't get into the seasons from the Vermeer lot. There's actually drainage way there. And you can't get to Cloverleaf on the north side. Casado is right there as well and there's also a drainage pool in that area. So right now, it's most of it will just be accessing it from the frontage road. And if Casado were to go in the future, actually, what is Martins? Martins would go in in the future and they could access that. But Martins does not connect into Cloverleaf directly. So you won't have RVs, campers, fit wheelers or anything else being towed off or deposited through Cloverleaf or through the seasons. It'd be directly off the frontage road. So here's the property question. We've got eight lots. Here's the seasons. Cloverleaf is over here. Here's the sort of that separation. Here's Martins. Here's Barber. It's plotted that way, but they don't exist currently. In the future, we are considering the possibility of actually paving Martins. Here's the frontage road. The R P, which was finished recently, is be right here. So you can actually access it directly off fifty-four and then access it from the front road onto the site. I don't believe there's adequate screening on the east side because of these open lots. They are not screened here either and the tree row stops. So you could consider a tree row to be substantial enough screenage, but it stops right about here and then it's kind of this open spot here. So I do believe that the conditional use should continue to possess screening on the east side. So that something has to be taken into consideration. Other than that, there is significant enough space here and this part is screened on this side. And then obviously, these are several properties that have not been considered for conditional use. It is recommended the planning mission have the planning mission chair or by chair, open the public hearing and receive comments, close the public hearing and then approve the history of the case. Number CUP twenty four dash two for the outdoor sales lot, continued by this screening to the east of the lots. But at this point, Mr. White, you can open the public hearing and receive comments.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing for comments at this point. You guys like to speak on that? Feel free.
Won't take too long, I promise.
First, last name and where you're from. Who do you represent?
My name's Scott Thorson. I'm the general manager of the fourth, current Kelson RVs in Iowa. And I just want to come thank you guys. I know it takes sacrifice for you guys to come in and hear this counsel and all the work you've done, all the work you've done. We're really excited to be a part of the city of God and we're family on dealership. We've always have been and we focus on bringing families together. And what we kind of thoroughly believe is the last activity that doesn't include screens and gets people out and traveling to this great country. So we're really excited. We're excited to be a part. And once again, I thank you for your time. If you have any questions for me, please feel free to ask.
Thank you.
Mr. White, at this point, if you want, you can close the public hearing and then have deliberation.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing with deliberation.
So there's a question of adequate screening. Who would decide whether adequate or not? And would that get decided?
Yes, screening is defined in the subdivision regulations and they have certain sort of delineations. Can't have too much space in between fences. So for example, if they're like, we're going to screen up a little bit of the chain link. And we've had this happen before where we say, no, you can't do chain link, right? And you have to do something that's actually considered a visual blockage. And screening has to be a minimum of six feet, maximum of eight feet generally for privacy. You can use trees and shrubbery and things of that nature, like I said. But it has to be substantially enough to actually cause that visual blockage, which, you know, can be kind of subject interpretation. But we've looked at that before and just kind of made determinations internally and that's considered acceptable. Sometimes if it's during the site plan process and we say you need to have screening, then they'll provide a screening plan in the site plan and you can take a look at it. Obviously, since buildings aren't existing, they're just switching ownership. And we would say, you know, you have substantial amount of time once you actually take ownership of property to put up adequate screening. And I've drawn visual aid, so I did make a determination that it's adequate.
So would we want a six-foot privacy fence along the east side? Because I don't believe that Vermeer has one now.
No, they don't have one now. So I'm asking, my recognition would be to acquire it and put one up.
And what about across the back?
I don't think it's necessary across the back because Cloverleaf already has a screened off area on the south side, but also it's got separation with the street. So it's not immediately a body of property.
And they're purchasing the building?
They are purchasing the building.
So does that mean they need to put up a monument sign if they put one?
They do, yeah. They would have to be a transference of sign from, if it is currently a pole sign, I can't remember if it is or not. But if it is a pole sign, then it has to convert to monument sign with ownership.
We don't have to worry about drainage issues or anything?
No, right now, it's already, so plating, when it was done, Cloverleaf was plated. And they had a retention plant building over here to retain water. And any discharge comes through this area over here or down through this area here. And you can kind of see the trail of water right now as it is charging this way. Currently, no, there's, there's no additional retention that we require from them. They're not asking to, you know, at this point, they're not asking for an additional impervious surface. They're not asking to pave everything or put in new buildings at this point, so.
And they're going to store RVs? So RV?
They're selling, they're not storing. They're selling RVs, fit wheelers. So this is actually going to be a sales lot, not a storage lot. And feel free to interject at any time.
Vermeer is still going to operate there for fourteen months. So if they do request a screen going up, will that be after Vermeer leaves?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So we can do an amortization process where it's fourteen months before or after, so once Vermeer exits, that grandfathered use of not having screening goes away. And then the new property owner would have to then apply.
So once the new owner would take ownership, that's when they'd have to change, just put the sign?
For occupy.
Yes.
I mean, they're going to take ownership.
Yeah, so that transfer, that transfer in and out, they'll have fourteen months before they actually, so they'll take ownership of it. Then it'll be fourteen months before they actually occupy the lot.
Where's Vermeer going to be now?
Park City.
Park City?
Figure building, building, the RV building.
Is there a monument sign there in there right now? Or what do they have out there? I haven't been out there in a while.
It's a building.
Do they have a pole sign?
I drive by there every day.
I can't think.
I can't either. I want to say it's like a brick deal with a sign on top of it. I can't remember.
It's there again. We will take a look at that. But you're right, for ownership and sign regulations, if there is a, I just don't remember if there was a pole sign or not. But if there is a pole sign, that has to convert to monument, right?
Well, it's down here at the bottom of the, right front of the building.
Yeah.
So I think there's kind of a brick deal and then there's a sign that comes up out of the brick.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have to take a look at it and see. Do you know offhand, Commissioner Parks, what they have? It's not that in the world for a conditional use permit, but obviously, we would have to have to convert, I would say, after Vermeer exits and they took ownership of it and moved in.
It's a pole mounted sign within Vermeer.
It's a what?
It is a pole mounted sign.
Pole mounted sign? Okay, yeah. So they would have to convert to monument sign in those standards. So that's just something you want to do well. When Vermeer actually leaves and, you know, RV Kelson, Kelson RV steps in and actually starts introducing surplus and merchandising and everything else, they would have to start converting it to a monument sign.
Were there any screening plans already in place? Have you thought through any options there?
Typically, what we do is we do fence it. But we also want to hear what the city has to say. So they want someone to help us frame and they're always open to different options.
Okay, good. I like the idea of requiring some, some type of screening. But whatever you guys agree upon with Fisher. And the trees are frickles. Looks like there's a pretty heavy tree row already. Mike, end the motion. Do we even put anything about the monument sign or is it?
No, it's automatically in the subdivision regulations. If you want to waive the subdivision regulations, that would be a different thing entirely. But, you know, we're, we're not forcing them to convert. It's just the way that the sign regulations have been written. So it's not something that's conditional.
That's kind of the test, change. Okay, we're looking for a motion. I'll take a motion to approve. Conditional use permit to be after a field left into the finite, this could be screened to the east of the lot.
Six. All within favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Very good. Motion passed. Six is zero. You guys welcome the stage for us tonight? If not, have a good one and enjoy your trip. Bye bye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is I M F two. This is a county conditional use permit for accessory dwelling unit, A D U, case number seal, N two zero two four dash zero zero two two zero. This is in the county. I'm going to give you a quick background, but at this point, actually, I think I'm just going to hand it over to Brad. At their lead is the senior planner of the Metropolitan Air Plan Department. He's going to take over for this item. Feel free to ask him any technical questions. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Brad Etherly, planner for M A P D. We're here to talk about case on twenty twenty four dash zero zero two twenty. For this case, the applicant is requesting a conditional use to allow an accessory apartment on property zone RR Rural Residential District. This subject site is just under six acres and is generally located on the east side of South one eighty-third street and within four hundred and twenty feet north of West Pontic Avenue with the address of twenty-two forty South one eighty-third Street West. I'm going to see if I can do this. I don't know. Yeah, right there. And right now, the subject site is currently undeveloped, but it is utilized for agricultural uses. The property currently has not been developed with any buildings, however, the applicants are planning to construct a principal building, a single-family dwelling with an outbuilding concurrently with the accessory apartment. And I don't know. Yeah, there's the site plan with one eighty-third right there. So. Right? Yeah.
Yes.
And so this is, this is where the single-family dwelling will be, the outbuilding, and then this is where the accessory apartment will be. Access to the accessory apartment would be from the proposed driveway from South one eighty-third Street West. And the principal structure in the accessory apartment would share with Spotted Lagoon and Wells. The definition of accessory apartment, according to the Unified Zoning Code, is listed in the staff report, as you can see. And then the zoning map is up, but I can tell you that the character of the area is rural and low-density residential. It is within the city of Goddard's urban area of influence, which is why we're here today. Properties to the north, south, east and west are zoned RR Rural Residential and unincorporated Central County. Property to the north is developed with a single-family dwelling. Properties to the east and south are under common ownership and are developed with a single-family dwelling and agricultural uses. And then property to the west across South one eighty-third is developed with a single-family dwelling and agricultural uses. The subject site was plotted on March twenty-second, two thousand and six, as part of the Marie's Meadow North Edition. And there are no other zoning cases associated with this property. The site has access to South one eighty-third street, which is a paved two-lane county arterial street. And the property does plan on using onsite sewage and groundwater. This is part of our future growth map and this map identifies the area in which the site is located to be appropriate for small city urban growth area, which means that this requires a conditional use in conformance of the plan based off of staff believing that the subject site, with it being in the Goddard urban growth area, we reviewed the Goddard twenty thirteen, twenty fifteen comprehensive plan to identify the proposed future land use of the subject site. And that map said that it was appropriate for future residential. So staff believes that the proposed accessory apartment conforms to the plan future for the subject site. Do you know if the site pics are on here or not?
I have a good one.
No, yeah, we should have site pics in the, in the report because they're pretty standard pictures of a big open field. So based on information available to the, prior to the public hearings, staff does believe that the accessory apartment should be approved subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. And these, these are based off the golden rules. We have not received any public comment that is either for or against. And so with that, I can stand for any questions. And the applicants are here as well.
I just got one weird question. Is the lagoon big enough to take care of a home and a accessory apartment?
They should have plenty of room with six acres. That is something that they'll have to take up with the building, the construction department when they turn and plan, so. So if they don't have room, then they would not be able to.
I was just wondering, they got it as fifty-five by fifty-five. I just wondered if that was adequate size.
I think that, I think that the, I, I don't review lagoons, but I think that six acres is, is big enough, yeah.
Any reason why the accessory apartment, because I see floodway reserve easement, there any distance that has to be there between the floodway and the section?
No, as long as it's out of any floodway, it would not, and that's just, that's just a pond for probably drainage. So again, as long as they've got enough room to fit it, this is all stuff that would be reviewed during the building permit stage. But again, as large as the tract of land is, I think that they've got plenty of room for everything.
I don't have any comparative questions.
Yeah, it's a good use of the language.
Yeah, absolutely.
Very good.
You have a motion or anything else?
Yeah, this, your recommendation would go to the Board of County Commissioners.
Maybe just make a simple motion to approve it. So just kind of quick background. As mentioned, this is an area of influence in the city. So our area of influence can go up to about three miles. It doesn't mean it is three miles. It means it can go up to three miles. It's kind of a negotiation between us and the city and the county about what our area of influence is. But that, that specific piece of property is definitely within our area of influence. And so that means anytime anybody wants to do a rezoning or a conditional use permit, and somebody who's seen these before, you'll have a conditional use of both RV, conditional use permits recently, a couple of years ago for, of one abandoned label. So when these come up, they first have to come, they do, I think, the public hearing first. And then they come to you guys and then they go back to the Board of County Commissioners. And so all the requirements for public hearing and notification happen at the county level. And then they come, since it's in our area of influence, they come to you guys and they say, what do you guys think? And if you guys say you don't like it, then it goes to the Board of County Commissioners and for final review. And if you guys say you do like it, same thing, it goes before the Board of County Commissioners for final review. If you don't like it and Board of County Commissioners do like it, then it requires a super majority of the Board of County Commissioners to approve it. If you do like it and they like it, then it's a simple majority, three out of five, you know. If you, if you do like it and they don't like it, once again, it requires a super majority for you, for them to veto your decision in this particular matter. But ultimately, the Board of County Commissioners is going to have final authority on this one since it is a county review project. But this does put some review and the rationale behind that is because once, as mentioned, this is in our growth area. So at some point, we don't know when, but presumably twenty, you know, twenty thirty, five, twenty forty, then Marie Meadows and surrounding properties would all be annexed into the corporate sentence of Goddard. So this is like being aware of the regulatory authority of the planning commission for the future. That's basically it.
Make a motion to approve case number seal in twenty twenty four dash zero zero two two zero. All second.
All within favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
And that is subject to the conditions as well?
If you're okay with all the conditions that's presented.
Yes.
Very good. At this point, you guys welcome the stage for us tonight? If not, have a good one. What is the Board of County Commission meeting, Brad, do you know?
Not a fan. It's going to be, well, actually, so, so since the M A P C and Hayesville, or I'm sorry, I apologize. Let me see what I have. Goddard Plan Commission was agreed on the same recommendation. The, the planning commission has the authority for conditional uses to be the final decision maker. So now, once we're through with this, y'all will mean that it's actually approved. So we're good to go.
Yes, thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
So old business, guys, it's time. New business, there is none. Staff report, so subdivision zoning regulation modification consideration. So C staff is working on modifying zoning and subdivision regulation for the U hospital adoption on the January meeting. If approved, the staff will present the city council for consideration of adoption. So this comes from the planning mission bylaws. So the commission shall annually review the comprehensive plan and zoning code to determine if any portion has become obsolete and shall make a report to the government if it's in the same honor before the first day of each year. So periodically, we'll review it. We don't do this every year because sometimes there's not any type of recommendations we would make for changes or we'll make changes sporadically throughout the year already. So then there's no reason to then bring it back before the planning commission to review again. But we're going to try, Ryan Schreck, he's the assistant city administrator, myself, we're going to try to tackle some what we consider sustainable changes to subdivision regulations. And so we will draft an outline and bring it before the planning commission, hopefully, in the first of the year. We're going to shoot for January, but if not January, then maybe February. And you guys could do a chance to take a look at it. See if you want anything, scratch something out, add something, whatever you guys would like to see. And then we'll bring that modification before the city council and the city council will finalize it and adopt it. And we'll have revised subdivision regulation zoning. So we're not going to tackle the comprehensive plan, but we are going to be tackling the subdivision regulation and zoning code. Comp plan is projected to be tackled at the end of twenty twenty-five, eighteen, twenty twenty-six. So we're going to do a first subdivision zoning and then comp plan next week following, so. So any questions related to that? At this point, move on to, I'm Jake. Time to push for comments.
Did we ever come up with a, with a solution or a number for duplexes or?
No, at this time, there was the consideration of a moratorium.
Yeah.
Was some provisions about, is a duplex the same as a twin home? What does that look like? Are we talking about lots? Are we talking about dwelling units? There was no clear delineation. Obviously, there was different opinions about what that should look like. So at this point, it's been tabled indefinitely. So at this, there is no restrictions at this point. So if a developer says they want to do a hundred duplexes, a hundred percent, then they technically could. I didn't tell, you know, they have to ask for rezoning and everything else, depending on what, what land is, anything else that goes into it. But at this point, there's nothing that says they couldn't ask for that. There's no, there's no moratorium.
Well, last month, we discussed the overlay district and how maybe that wasn't, wasn't the solution, but any update on that or still working on it?
So, okay, well, bring that back up. I think it's still good. I think in practice, in a way. I think in practice, an overlay district is a good idea, just not for what we were proposing it for. So let's go back to the moratorium, like, how would we enforce that? And so the idea was, well, maybe overlay district would be the idea, except in practice, it's not typically used that way. So they decided that if we were gonna force, let's say that the council and the developers like, "Well, I want 6040." And, and the council's like, "Well, I want, you know, 3070," or whatever it is. Then it would be a restrictive covenant that they would file with the registered Ds if, and say, "Hey, we're gonna force this on ourselves just so we can get the entitlements and get zoning and plating approved." Um, but the overlay district in principle is still a good idea. And I kind of, harking back to what Vice Chair Paton said about using it in downtown, I still think that's a good idea. I think that design standards, um, and former, former Planning Commissioner Grayfeen wanted to see more enforced design standards downtown as well. And, um, um, you know, um, former Planning Commissioner Tom Manhambler, you know, rest in peace. He's passed, obviously, but he just, he wanted to see that as well, just for the design standards. And overlay district is a perfect way to implement design standards in a specific geographic area. So that would go into the comprehensive plan. It's possible that you can put that actually in the comp, in the subdivision regulation and zoning as well, because it's like your crafting a zoning district for a specific area that lays on top of and modifies or supplements that area. And so in, in principle, an overlay district is a good idea, but it has to be tactfully applied. It can't be just kind of generally piecemeal for each development, so. Yes, but yeah, I do think it's a good idea and I still think we should apply. And I think including that how it's applied, you know, can be contentious because you're talking about applying in a very specific area and you're talking about maybe imposing more cost on the developer if he wants to build a two-story building, like off the main street. And we're saying it's gotta be all rains coding, it's gotta be all brick, right? No metal or something of that nature, which you guys can do. That, that just increases the cost, so there's sort of that contentious nature of it. But it looks better for downtown, so maybe that's the design aesthetic you want. That can be an overlay district, so.
I got one more. Whatever kind of the people want to put the RV part down, let's go.
At this point, the Withrows, Mark Withrow, who asked for that, um, we have not seen anything. So I don't know if they're considering still doing that or not, or if they're realizing that Goddard's growth makes their land valuable, incredibly valuable. So at this point, they may just be holding on to have to sell to a future development. But we don't know. Mark hasn't reached out to us since then, so. There's nothing to force it of them, you know, so just wait and see.
Mark, you're good. Did you have any? Okay. Um, I was just gonna ask for those of you that attended the joint meeting with this school, the city council. Uh, any thoughts?
I think it's important to get out there that, that regardless of what, of what, what decisions we or the city council make with growth in Goddard, that, that as far as the school district is, um, is concerned, it's, one is a good thing to grow. But also, a city which all is far to work to anything we're doing with growth. So even if we shut down all developments, um, the city which all is going to grow and continue to add to our schools. And, uh, I think we need to keep that in mind. And I hope that, uh, the citizens will learn that, because it seems like that's a lot of the complaints you hear, or at least what I read on Facebook are about, um, when people about the growth of Goddard and the burden that hurts on the schools.
Well, that's schools getting the school tax, you know?
Yeah.
Goddard's not getting the property tax, but the school's getting the school tax.
Yeah, right. Depending on where a building lands. So people wanna be in the Goddard School District. Generally, so you'll see a development, build a random development, they'll say, you know, ABC Development in the Goddard School District. But it could be five miles away from Goddard. And because the school district is six times as large as the corporate limits of Goddard. So if a house is built in the school district in the city limits, we get the property tax. But if it's built outside the city limits in Wichita, Wichita gets the property tax, but the school district still gets the school tax.
Right.
Right? So it's kind of like Goddard and then School District. And then, you know, Wichita is much larger, obviously, but, but also the county, the school district goes into the county as well. So Marie Meadows, for example, they're paying Goddard school taxes, excuse me, they're paying, yeah, the school district for Goddard taxes, but not Goddard city limit taxes. They're paying county taxes, et cetera, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so that's, depending on where a property lands, but people wanna be in the Goddard School District. It's a, it's considered one of the best school districts in the state. It's like top 10 in the state, depending on who you ask. And so that drives a lot of residential growth. And so where it lands, where the residential growth lands, if it really benefits the city or if it doesn't. But a bond, as, as Commissioner Milligan was referring to, like, if he goes through a bond of the school district, when they vote, when you wanna vote yes for the kids for that bond to, so the school can borrow money to build more facilities and more... Right now, if all of Goddard voted no for a bond and all of Wichita voted yes, that were in the school district, we'd be outvoting about five to one.
Yeah.
So it's, as Commissioner Milligan's referring to, a lot of the school's growth, um, is a fraction of Goddard's growth, so.
But they're still paying taxes to Goddard.
Correct.
That's what's important right there.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's also, the, the school district gets federal subsidies for each child that's actually saving the seeds and everything else. And so it's beneficial to them. And, and voting, you know, a bond with the school district means that they're growing and the quality will continue. If the quality continues, then there's gonna still be residential development. So Goddard will still benefit, um, but I think Wichita benefits greatly from the school district as well, so.
There was a, there was a question asked, I think it was by Mr. Klein, um, about how full the classrooms really were. Did anybody actually were able to put an answer on that? I mean, it kind of went around and around, but still don't feel like we really got a solid answer on that.
Yeah.
For me, anyway.
I didn't give an, I don't feel that I got an answer out of it, but...
I was just curious.
Yeah, and I, Vice Chair Hade asked for the report, so I'm gonna have to get him now. So what I'll do is I'll distribute the Davis demographic report that the school puts together to sort of, it's the underlying justification for the bond issuance, is they'll hire a third party to do an initial report. And then that third party inevitably always reaches out to me. And so then I work in tandem with the third party for demographic analysis and residential development and growth. Um, so the, what the report basically said initially, because Davis demographic's been hired twice, and both times they reach out to me and I work with them. The original report said that growth was highest in 2018, plateaued, and then they lost kids for a little while. And it's projected, was projected to stay the same until about 2035, maybe. And don't quote me on that. The new report showed that the same as the old report, but perhaps by 2026, and maybe don't quote me on that either, then you would start seeing maybe 100 to 200 kids additional every year. And so that's where the school was saying, "We need to issue a bond in the coming years to help finance new buildings." And so depending on which class you're in, like which grade level, you probably are seeing some, some, um, I don't know what you wanna say, some, some filled-in seats. And then, but as you progress up the chain into, you know, seniors and juniors and freshmen of high schools, you start to see them spreading out a little bit, where they'll start going into other high schools as well, besides this probably a little bit of a different high school. And so it's usually the early childhood, um, you know, middle school, elementary school, that you're gonna see most of that stress and that strain on the classrooms. And then as they progress up the chain, and they, it starts to thin out a little bit as they go to other, as parents move around, et cetera. Yeah, the early ones, everyone's gonna go through a more strain.
Any other comments? Ready for a motion or a motion?
I make the motion to adjourn.
Second. All who's in favor?
Aye.
We're done.
Very much. Who was the second?